Good evening. I'd like to call the Waukesha County Council meeting for July 12, 2016, to order. Could we please have the roll call?
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Red Brown?
Here.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Ken Mann?
Here.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Here.
Carl Weimer?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Would you please rise and join me for the flag salute? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a couple of quick announcements. If you have your cellphones with you, please put them on vibrate or off. And if you'll be, excuse me, if you'll be handing out any paperwork to council members tonight, please give one copy to the clerk for our office files. I've got a couple items to discuss from today's meeting earlier. We had an executive session today to discuss some of the Cherry Point UGA Act Plan amendments. And after considering advice from our legal counsel, we voted to forward the Cherry Point UGA Act Plan Amendment proposals to the Planning Commission requesting an expedited process. We anticipate that we will be considering a resolution to determine timelines and other pertinent data and details at our July 26 council meeting. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to that? It's well stated. Okay, thank you. Also, the Waukesha County Council is looking for applicants to prepare pro and con statements for the local voters pamphlet related to the proposed EMS levy. If you or someone you know is interested in being appointed to either the pro or con statement committee, please call the county council office by 4:30 PM on Monday, January 18. We'll move into our public hearings. Those of you that want can sign up, or you may have already. Those of you who signed up will be called first. If you're unable to sign up, don't worry, we'll allow you to speak. Each speaker should state your name for the record, and you'll be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will keep track of the time. They'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left, and they'll also tell you when your time is up. The first public hearing is an ordinance amending Waukesha County Code, Chapter 24.05, On-Site Sewage System Rules and Regulations. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening. John Walpers, Environmental Health Manager for the Waukesha County Health Department. What you have before you is an ordinance that we drafted to place back in language that was inadvertently omitted when we approved the regulations back. I believe it was in 2007. This is specifically what you had in your packet for Section 220 licensing. It covered pumpers, it covered installers, and it had language to the ONM specialists, but it did not give the health officer the authority to revoke, suspend, when and if needed.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, was this, did this come to your attention because of you just were reading the code and checking to make sure it was okay, or did the situation arise where you needed to actually implement this ruling and you were not able to?
Excellent question, the latter.
Okay.
We had an individual who, we are now doing QAQC checks on the onsite sewage systems of both homeowners and operations and maintenance specialists. And when we started doing that auditing, we ended up finding out that there was an individual who had said that it was satisfactory, and we went out there within a few days and found it completely failing. So it brought to our attention, we brought them in, talked to them, explained what we found, asked for their input on how they found what they found and what we found, and looked at, okay, now what are we going to do? And that was missing from that.
So you wanted to apply some kind of sanction or consequence?
At least we now have it documented, and should it happen again, we can take the next step if we need to. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
So we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like, there's no one signed up, so is there anyone that would like to talk about onsite sewage system rules and regulations? Mr. Winger? That's coming up, that's coming up. Yeah, we have public hearings first. Anyone like to speak to onsite sewage systems? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. What's the wishes of the council?
With approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Brenner?
I'm not supporting this. I have a feeling that this came about because of somebody I know who contacted me, who I've known for many years, is an excellent designer, and ran into trouble with somebody saying, "You can't do..." And I went and did the research, and I could not find a reason why the system she designed wouldn't be approved. And I called and talked to John. He didn't want to meet with the two of us, so, you know, he had his mind made up, and I just feel like, this is like, makes it easier for, just say there is, and I'm not saying there is, say there's a certain specific staff person who's got an attitude about somebody, and that staff person may be really liked in the health department and all, and I just, I think it's putting way more ability for somebody to take out their personal stuff on somebody else, and I don't like it.
Would you like a response?
What?
Would you like a response?
Sure.
This has to do with ONM specialists, the individuals who go out and do the inspections or the evaluations of systems. This has nothing to do with designing and licensed designers.
Doesn't have anything to do with...
No. The licensed designers are also licensed within the state of Washington. We don't license them.
Okay, so this has nothing to do with being designers?
No, totally, totally separate things.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Maybe I can, well, I'm still concerned about that person, though.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could you please call the roll?
Barbara Brenner?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
This passes six to one with Councilmember Brenner opposed. Our second public hearing is request approval for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Bellingham and Waukesha County for 2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program Award. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council, Bill Elfo, Waukesha County Sheriff. We have requested this public hearing and approval to enter into an interlocal agreement with the city of Bellingham for a 2016 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. The grant will provide us $15,546 for the purchase of ballistic helmets that comply with the United States Department of Justice ballistic standards and will be used by members of our SWAT team when deployed to, in situations involving confrontations with armed and dangerous suspects. This equipment will also facilitate connectivity with new radio equipment and hearing protection. The sheriff's office currently issues ballistic helmets and body armor to all deputies. This will replace the equipment that has exceeded its shelf life that's currently deployed to our SWAT team. As you know, armed attacks on citizens and law enforcement have been on the rise across the country. I've also brought a printout, I think a picture may speak a thousand words on this, about how one of these helmets saved the life of a brave police officer as he entered the Pulse nightclub in Orlando to help save the lives of citizens that were shot by a suspect. So I want our officers to do their job professionally and safely and make sure they go home at the end of their shift, so that's the purchase, that's the reason for this request. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone, there's no one signed up for this either. Is there anyone that would like to speak about the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant Program? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
I'm with approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Ms. Brenner?
The timing of this seems extremely appropriate, and especially, isn't that memorial for the Dallas policemen today, too? So I really appreciate what you guys do, and these look like maybe they'll help.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. Now we'll move into the open session that Mr. Winger was referring to. During the open session, you'll have up to three minutes to address the council. Same rules, you'll be advised when there's 30 seconds left, and you'll be advised when your time is out. Please state your name and topic of interest. If your name is complicated, please spell it for the clerk, and be sure to speak into the microphone. Thank you so much for your cooperation. We will now open the public session.
I'm Barry Winger, and I'm from Bellingham, Waukesha County. Is that too loud? Okay. So I actually want to talk about change of use on developments, and I can tell you a little story about a guy who has a car wash, an imaginary car wash, actually, in the county. His name's Big Pete, okay? So Big Pete has got his little car wash going, employs a bunch of people, you know, people bring their car in, they get washed, it adds value to it to take the car away. Everyone's happy at Big Pete's place, and they're making good wages and stuff. Then Big Pete gets an idea, "Why don't I sell cars?" And so he starts to sell cars. "Look, wait a minute, Pete, that's not the same thing as washing cars. That's a change of use. Real clear, you need to get another permit." Well, guess what? The refineries in Waukesha County have, are refineries. They're permitted as refineries, not transporters of crude oil to anywhere else. They couldn't be because it was illegal until just recently. It's also still illegal under the Magnison Act. And so they need to get new permits if they want to export oil. That's a change of use. It's a shoreline conditional use, which means it requires a cumulative impacts study, because you have to look at, if one of them does it, the other one's going to be able to do it. You have to look at the impacts of both those doing it, the shipping and everything else. So interestingly enough, in 1992, Warren Magnison, the late great senator of our state, passed the, you know, the words, the Magnison Amendment to the Marine Animal Protection Act, federal law, still on the books for Puget Sound, despite the lifting of the crude export ban, you know, nationally. It doesn't affect Puget Sound in that way, though. Same time, he also was the champion of the CZMA, Coastal Zone Management Act, which is the federal law that gives power to the states to have a state management act, which gives the county a shoreline management act. So any permit issued by the county has to be in alignment with that state law, which says in it specifically, other state statutes also have to be complied with. And so you have the Magnison Act with your shoreline program basically saying, there's no way you can allow export of crude oil from these refineries.
30 seconds, please.
And they'll need to get a conditional use, but it's kind of futile for them to apply for it, but that would be in the public process. Anyway, the amendments you were proposing for Chapter 2, I think, are very much in alignment with the existing law, and it actually makes it much more consistent with federal law. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christopher Bruce Diley, and I'm following up on the state resolution that went on where they collected signatures here in the county of Waukesha County. And I was watching Seattle King 5 News, and they didn't even mention that the resolution involves preventing people that exhibit mental illness from purchasing firearms. They completely censored that. They didn't even point that out in their broadcast. So it's very misleading to the voters, so I just wanted to bring it up to people's attention, that when they do vote on this, you know, read the wording very carefully. And I just wanted to also point out that I see both sides of the issue, because when I was younger, I hiked over in England and Wales, on the coast of England and Wales and Ireland, and I had no problem with public safety, you know, with there not being any guns. So I can see a society that doesn't have guns being a safe society, but I can also see the other side of it, where, you know, say with the reintroduction of the grizzlies into the Cascades, a person would need a gun. So, and my other point is that if, if it was, if that is where our society is moving, is the disarmament of, you know, of people having firearms, I think maybe a helpful suggestion would be that people consider, if they're going to target people, like people that exhibit mental illness, which, again, that would have excluded Hitler and Timothy McVeigh, because they did not exhibit mental illness. But if you're going to target a group, see like the weak and the unfit, the homeless, those exhibiting mental illness, gypsies, et cetera, et cetera, if you're going to target them and take away their guns within a violent gun culture, you're going to make them very vulnerable, and it's going to increase psychiatric illness, because we're already, say like with the homeless, we're already without shelter. So that's why we're walking around talking to, that's why I walk around talking to myself in public, because I'm lacking shelter, and that affects me psychologically, and my lacking security. So if you target me and take my mic, and then we have the prospect of homeless camps, internment camps, concentration camps, and with Paul Allen, The Seattle Times reported that Paul Allen, his idea for the homeless is to get shipping containers for the homeless to live in. I couldn't have been the only one to think, shipping cages, where are they going to ship us?
30 seconds, please.
You know, where are they going to ship us? They put us in these shipping, I don't want to live in a shipping container, you know, and so my point is, it's, I don't want to be rounded up. That's my point. So I'm just trying to see that there's two sides of the issue, and I just wanted to try to have some sort of moderation about it. So thank you very much.
It's a precarious dance.
She brings gifts.
I come bearing gifts. Kate Blystone, Program Director for Resources for Sustainable Communities here in Bellingham, Washington. Resources was founded in 1982 as Bellingham Community Recycling. Our mission is to protect the health of Northwest Washington's people and ecosystems through the applications of science, education, advocacy, and action. We have more than 20,000 supporters, and it's on the behalf of those supporters that I make these comments tonight. Over the last five years, we've been collecting signatures. At first, we collected them to give to you if you ever voted on a certain coal export terminal at Cherry Point. Then we collected more after the oil trains started derailing and exploding all over our continent, and those trains started coming to Waukesha County. And while you were considering the comprehensive plan, we collected signatures in supportive language, like that proposed by Mr. Weimer, on discouraging fossil fuel exports from Cherry Point. In total, this lovely package contains approximately 9,000 signatures, asking for measures to prevent export of coal and oil from our shores, of which 3,500 are specifically related to action needed on this comprehensive plan update. I'm giving these to you for two reasons. First, you may have seen that this week is the "Stop Oil Trains Now" Week of Action. This week, thousands of people stood up across the nation to say no to exploding oil trains rolling through our communities. But tonight, we deliver these signatures in hopes that you will hear this call. Our community cannot take on all the risks of fossil fuel exports without any of the rewards. The second reason I'm bringing these to you is because you're about to write a resolution, sending Mr. Weimer's proposal to the Planning Commission. I'm going to stand up here, and I won't argue the merits of that proposal. I will ask, as I did earlier today, that you consider two things in your resolution. First, include specific language asking the Planning Commission to take this issue up ahead of others that may be in the queue in front of it for consideration. This amendment is part of the package of amendments already docketed for consideration during this update, and as such, it is subject to the statutory timeline in place in RCW 3670A, the Growth Management Act. Second, please include specific language stating that the county council will not act-
30 seconds, please.
-on the remainder of the amendments in this comp plan until after you've received, reviewed, and voted on the Planning Commission's recommendation on Mr. Weimer's proposed amendments. Our concern is that without these two provisions, this proposal, which was generated as a result of public outcry for it, will languish at the Planning Commission. I'm asking you to not let this opportunity to plan for a better future pass you by, and please urge the Planning Commission to move quickly, and wait to vote on the whole comp plan until their recommendations are in. Thank you for your hard work on this issue and your service to this community.
Warren Shea, 1453 Humboldt Street. Those petitions that you received tonight were signed by thousands of ordinary citizens, not high-priced industry lobbyists. They were signed by people who care about the safety and future of their homeland, and about whether our planet will survive in the face of climate change. We've been proposing the ideas in Carl Weimer's amendments for a long time, and I do understand they're being forwarded to the Planning Commission. I'm thinking, though, it ultimately will come back to you folks for a decision. It's important to note that none of these proposals have any impact whatsoever on existing refinery jobs. In fact, they protect them. The citizens have spoken, so do the right thing here. Support Weimer's amendments, and don't allow permits for new unrefined fossil fuel projects. Be bold, be decisive, and be the leaders that we elected you to be. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Lurch, and I live in Everson. On my way home today to Everson, I read a sign, I saw a sign that read, "Waukesha County Council does not represent your county." Just to let you know that. So first off, I want to say I elected all of you sitting up there, and I'm so grateful for your work to find a balanced approach to solutions that affect all of us. And finally, I live in the county, and you do represent me. I am mystified and totally saddened by the constant paranoid lies, divisiveness, and name-calling that some choose rather than finding ways to work together and find solutions. I've given testimony and written several times supporting your work on the comprehensive plan, and asking you to approve many things I believe will enhance our county. While I may not have the authority of those who come before you in expensive suits and watches, I trust that you will give me equal standing and hear my concerns. Tonight, I'm asking that you adopt Carl Weimer's amendments to Chapter 2. I understand there's going to be a little roundy-round on that one. While the current industry should remain in Cherry Point, the future of our county will depend on you framing a plan that reflects the need for a just transition to other industries that are safe for workers and foster a clean and healthy environment. Further, I ask that you seriously consider and adopt the language suggestions by Sandy Robson to these same amendments that honor the cultural and spiritual aspects of thousands of indigenous county residents. Our county has a moral obligation to protect the cultural and spiritual resources of our county. We are lucky to have them. I realize this will be a hard thing to do, and I urge you to do it soon. Not wait or delay, although I am now hearing there is a delay in the works. It won't get any easier. Act now. You have the authority to act now, despite the gripes about process heard lately. Mr. Allendorfer from BP Refinery expresses shock in a letter I read, that after 50 years of status quo, you dare to change the plan. Well, welcome to a changing world, away from dependence on fossil fuel. None of this means a loss of jobs for those currently employed. Exporting crude may, on the other hand, as a refinery goes overseas-
30 seconds, please.
...and gets sold back to us. That will put a few workers out of a job. Your website does not, does not post the supposed 2,300 comments in the past week, but what I did read asks you to delay, study, put off, consult, always with the caveat that you are killing jobs by asking for safer, cleaner industries and looking forward to a brighter future. What are these people thinking? Don't delay. Study period is over. Enough consultation. Act now. Approve Carl Weimer's amendments. Thank you so much for your courage.
My name is Virginia Malmquist, M-A-L-M-Q-U-I-S-T. Yes, I've voted for each of you, I believe, and had the pleasure of doing so, because I believe that you are forward-thinking. And in being forward-thinking, we're looking at what is our world coming to. Our world is coming to serious trouble with, with climate change. Shipping hot oil across the ocean is not going to support our grandchildren. It's not going to help our community in the process. I encourage you to make a decision to support Carl Weimer's motion, so that we can have a safe community, and a community that contributes to a better world rather than contributes to one that is rapidly deteriorating. We have the possibility of becoming leaders in our community, in our broader community of the Northwest, by preventing fossil fuels from leaving our nation and going out over the ocean. The Puget Sound cannot handle it, and neither can the rest of the world. Thank you for your consideration and your work.
Evening. My name is Sandy Lawrence. I live north of town in Axton Road, 42nd District. I'm going to talk about Miami. Miami is one of the quintessential cities in this country. It is endangered by sea level rise, and that's actually pertinent in terms of our comprehensive plan, that you're going to be making decisions about. In the last iteration, the fifth assessment report of the IPCC, they projected a potential one and a half to four feet of sea level rise by the end of this century. Those data have been updated subsequently, in particular by a very seminal report by James Hansen and 16 other collaborators from a number of countries around the world. Better data now project the potential of five to six feet of sea level rise by the end of the century. And in fact, NOAA, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, is suggesting that Miami is going to be subject to as much as 81 inches of sea level rise. That's closer to seven than six feet. Miami has a very unique geology. Its subsurface rock is largely limestone. It's very porous and permeable. You can't put up a seawall, because the sea will come in and permeate underneath. So if there truly is going to be as much as five or six feet of sea level rise by the end of the century, just 84 years from now, one human lifetime, it's going to be very clear within five to 10 years if that's going to happen, and I think it is easy to suggest we're going to be evacuating Miami by mid-century. In fact, the amount of real estate lost or vulnerable in Florida is going to add up to about $3 trillion. So a comprehensive plan that does not focus on the idea of restricting the amount of extraction, processing, and especially transshipment of fossil fuels of all types is not actually comprehensive. So I would ask you to bear that in mind. I would like to not have to apologize to my children about Miami, and I hope you feel the same. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Garey, last name spelled G-A-R-E-Y. I'm a retired refinery worker. I spent 25 years working for both Shell and Tesoro near Anacortes and those refineries. At the last years of my employment there, I was president of United Steelworkers Local 12-591. I represented workers in those refineries, as well as the Tesoro refinery in Honolulu, Hawaii. I'm now serving in retirement as an executive board member of the Washington State Blue-Green Alliance. I'm here to encourage- I'm here to encourage language in the comp plan revision process that would restrict or deny crude oil export, particularly from the refiners BP and Phillips here. Others have spoken about new infrastructure. I'm here to focus on the refineries. The potential for those owner-operators to actually shut down processing units and restrict their operations simply to logistics operations using the Tank Farm and the Wharf to export crude oil is certainly much more likely now that the federal ban on crude oil export has been overturned. The opportunity, the potential to do something like that with other products has always been there. Just a couple of years ago, Tesoro sought to shut refinery units in their Honolulu refinery and turn it into a logistics terminal, which would have severely impacted citizens in Hawaii. That was finally overturned. They were compelled to sell the plant. Exporting crude oil, the raw material for the refiners, not only increases the cost for other refiners, but also makes it much more likely that finished products are imported here, most likely from Asia on the West Coast, where there are no restrictions or controls for either environmental protections or fair labor standards. Blue-Green Alliance believes that as long as there are viable markets for the products that the refiners produce, the transportation fuels, the domestic refinery workers ought to produce those materials. So I'm here to support anything that can be done to restrict or deny crude oil export from those refineries without impacting their right to export finished products. To do so, I think, is in the best interest of workers here in Watkin County. It's in the best interest of Washington State and beyond. I thank you for your consideration.
May I make a point of information for the record before I start my comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I attended the July 5th Special Committee Hole Meeting that you all had, and the motion that was put forth, I believe by Mr. Weimer, to hold his amendment matter or that discussion, was said to be until at least July 12. And I took that to mean the meeting tonight. I didn't think it was specified that that decision might be made earlier this morning, and I believe a lot of people may have thought that unless I understood that wrong. So that was my first thing. My name is Sandy Robson from Birch Bay. I support Councilmember Weimer's proposed amendments to Chapter 2, Landuse, Cherry Point, and the comp plan. I also hope the council will consider the changes I suggested in my July 3 comment with some changes to his amendment, which I believe further strengthen it. Back on July 21, 2015, Lummi Nation Planning Director Kirk Vinisch submitted a comment letter on behalf of Lummi Nation, which has approximately 5,000 members, each of which has treaty rights secured to them by our federal government. The letter was regarding the Cherry Point UGA proposal for the 2016 comp plan update. The letter stated, quote, "The county has listened to three years of steady comments from the Lummi Nation and the general public expressing fundamental concerns about protection of cultural heritage, cumulative degradation of the environment, shortages in water supply sufficient to meet the needs of endangered Nuksek Chinook salmon, and deterioration of quality of life, all of which are directly relevant to the county's current planning effort. We believe this brings into focus the policy framework for uses that should and should not be permissible at Cherry Point." On December 10, 2015, Mr. Vinisch submitted another letter for Lummi Nation in which they recommended some specific language be added to the comp plan. The January 14, 2016 Planning Commission meeting minutes reported there was a discussion by commissioners referencing Lummi Nation's July and December 2015 letters. The commission did not feel comfortable making any decision as to whether or not to include Lummi Nation requested language in the comp plan and decided to let the council decide about those. So three-plus years of steady comments from Lummi Nation and the general public. The July 2015 letter from Lummi Nation. The December 2016 letter from Lummi Nation. Numerous Planning Commission and County Council meetings, which included hundreds of verbal and written comments from the public since that, December 2016 letter from Lummi. The Treaty Rights Decision on May 9, 2016, from Army Corps, denying the permit for GPT. The Washington State DNR's June 2016 denial of a lease needed for proposed GPT. Finally, after all of that, Carl Weimer took action, as council members are legally allowed and expected to do, and proposed his recent amendments for Chapter 2.
30 seconds, please.
The information contained in both the July and December 2015 Lummi Nation letters essentially the foundation for Mr. Weimer's amendments. Lummi Nation's 2015 letter, July, "The proposed framework, theme, and direction of the plan might have been adequate 30 years ago, but it is now inappropriate. We believe the plan should reflect a vision for sustainable growth rather than continued high-impact heavy industry with a large carbon footprint. Amendments to the comprehensive plan can and should create a best-practices, sustainable development policy framework for the regulation of Cherry Point." I think that statement sums up what likely everyone sitting in this room tonight knows is best for our county's future relating to Cherry Point, but what some still don't want to acknowledge, and that is, the important amendments Carl Weimer has proposed to Chapter 2, Cherry Point, are not only appropriate, they're called for, desperately called for now. Thank you.
Deanna Jensen, Birch Bay. Thank you, council members, for all of your hard work, including this particular gathering today. I would like to acknowledge that I'm on land that is the traditional territory of the Lummi and Nuksek peoples. It is my hope that we will continue to nurture our relationship with our coastalis neighbors and the shared responsibilities to their homelands where we all reside today. A couple weeks ago, I spoke in support of Councilmember Weimer's proposed amendment to Chapter 2 of the comprehensive plan regarding Cherry Point UGA. I have been pleased to see the County Council responding after months and months of input to requests from the Lummi Nation and hundreds of Watkin County citizens to incorporate language into Chapter 2 that would protect the lands, waters, and life forms that sustain us here and contribute to our quality of life, as well as protecting the treaty rights and cultural and spiritual resources of the Lummi Nation. I am happy that the council members are embarking on work on this. I am disappointed that it's being sent back to the Planning Commission. One thing I wanted to comment on tonight was Councilmember Brown's comment at the July 5 Committee of the Hole Meeting, where he stated he was concerned about shifting production of fossil fuels into developing nations where environmental controls are much weaker than they are here. First of all, as Rhonda mentioned, it actually seems that this could be the outcome of the shipping of crude oil through Cherry Point to be refined in developing nations, which is something that the Lummi Nation and hundreds of citizens have requested not be permitted. On the other hand, expressing such a concern about additional fossil fuel industry projects here at Cherry Point does not seem a reasonable concern to me. Industry lobbyists are constantly trying to restrict and overturn environmental regulations, so we really have no guarantee that the safeguards, such as clean air and clean water regulations that are in place today, will remain tomorrow. Also, if we were to allow expansion of or additional fossil fuel projects here, it would do nothing to guarantee that developing countries would not promote, expand, and permit more fossil fuel projects there as well. And then we would have the immediate dangers and adverse impacts of the projects that we permitted here, as well as the indirect ones of those permitted overseas. We should feel confident that this is the time for us as a community and the County Council as our representative agency to take responsibility, leadership, and action regarding planning to not allow expansion or additional fossil fuel projects in our county. Thank you.
Mike Senate, Bellingham, Washington. First, I want to thank the council for all the work you have done on the comp plan. I've made several comments and thought I was done. Then I saw the spectacle of all the suits here on July 5. No offense made you so bespoke right there. What were BP and 66 so concerned about in Chapter 2? They aren't in the busted coal business, and they don't export crude oil. I decided to get reacquainted with BP, formerly British Petroleum, since they are the big player in the county. BP, responsible for the 2005 Texas City refinery disaster, killed 15 workers and injured almost 200, guilty of maintenance and safety violations that caused the blast, paid $100 million in fines and penalties to the US government in Texas. BP, responsible for the 2006 Prudhoe Bay Pipeline spill, the largest north-slope accident so far, and was hit with the largest civil penalties to that date. BP, owner of the 2010 Deepwater Horizon catastrophe, pled guilty to 11 counts of involuntary manslaughter and has paid almost $20 billion in fines and penalties. Perhaps they should be renamed F&amp;P Oil Unlimited. Then there was the Little Fire at Cherry Point 2012, resulting in state F&amp;Ps. And finally, BP, along with the rest of the oil industry, successfully lobbied the corrupted US Congress to lift the ban on exporting crude oil. I have to ask why. I don't trust an outfit with such a rap sheet. BP is an integral part of Watkin County's economy, providing high-wage jobs, paying taxes, and donating to charities. In these ways, BP is a corporate benefactor. BP is also a corporate criminal, and anyone who thinks that BP values Watkin County's interests over its bottom line is sadly mistaken. The pro-coal-terminal folks accuse the Lummi Nation and its allies of wanting to, quote, "deindustrialize" Cherry Point. In truth, they are betting the possibility of deindustrialization by opposing the proposed fossil fuel export ban. Is BP planning a Brexit from its refinery operations? Let's not wait to find out. Let's not wait to witness a crude oil spill from a tanker pier despoiling the Salish Sea Aquatic Reserve. Let's not wait to see gas prices spike as the county imports oil even as we export it. That sounds like a Trump business plan. Let's not wait and watch refinery workers get laid off. Instead, let's idle the Rolex lobbyists who swarmed into this chamber and preserve the refinery job. Keep the crude here and keep refining it here like we've done for over 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Mike Kaufman. Thank you. I'm one of the people in the comprehensive plan in the utility chapter of Chapter 5, which I may have mentioned in the past. And it exists, in part, I'm proud to say, I think, for raising my hand and wanting to do that back in 1990. This year, I approached the Planning Commission as an architect and knowledgeable person on Chapter 5, and during the review, when it came up, I found that, really, it's a place where right-of-way language exists, eminent domain, the franchise agreement for utilities exists. Yet, most of what's in Chapter 5, or the knowledge of Chapter 5, is beyond most people. And it's what I found, in my personal opinion, seemed to be beyond the Planning Commission to comprehend. They basically blew it off as they really didn't have enough time to learn about it. And the Planning Department, when I approached them to talk with them about it, basically didn't have much knowledge on it or time. And they moved on to keep their schedule. That's what happened to Chapter 5. No time spent on it if it was need be. I spent the last two weeks actually over on the Olympic Peninsula during the holiday and so on. And you ride past, and the only reason that the old-growth trees exist out there at all is because of Olympic National Park. There are a few people that got excessively rich off of all that old-growth timber. But how many pizzas and how many six-packs of beer did that old-growth forest buy? And now Forks is totally reliant on the traffic that comes through to look at the park and look at the old-growth trees and the tourist traffic. It's all gone, and it's never going to be replaced. And so when you hear these things, I really believe that Mr. Weimer's amendments and the things that you're being asked to pass are actually in support of jobs. When you come about it, most of the things that the nation's capitalists, corporations are trying to do is grab our hard utilities, our commodities, export them as fast as they can, and grab that dollar and move on, and the rest of us are left wondering what's going to be next. But by stopping that from moving off of our coasts
30 seconds, please.
and moving out of country, you're actually promoting jobs. Use that energy. Why don't we build a refinery on top of the oil field? Why do we need Keystone Pipeline? There's an alternative here to that, and use our energy for us. I support Mr. Weimer, Councilman Weimer's amendments. I urge you to move forward with it, and I support the petitions that the resources put forward. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Paula Rotandi, and I live in Birch Bay. And I want to thank you for the sacrifice and services you make serving on the County Council. I'm speaking in support of Councilmember Weimer's proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. I imagine that some of you are as disappointed as I am that you did not vote today to adopt those proposed changes. Like many people here, I have been working literally for years trying to protect our county from additional damage that may be done from new fossil fuel export proposals. I am strongly in favor of keeping our existing Cherry Point Industries operating safely, and I believe that needs to be our emphasis. I witnessed from my house the fire in 2012 at Cherry Point. I evacuated my house. A huge black cloud smoke quickly came across Birch Bay and overwhelmed my home. I evacuated, even though I hadn't been told to do that. Really, would you stay with a cloud like that coming over your home? So I would ask that we do everything we can to make the existing operations as safe as possible. But we cannot take new risks with new proposals. And I believe that the damage that can be done from shipping crude oil and other fossil fuels overseas where they're burned, the way it will contribute to climate change, I don't think we can afford that. So I'm horribly disappointed that even after years of work by thousands of citizens, the lobbyists for the fossil fuel industries put so much
30 seconds, please.
pressure on you that this has gone back to the comp plan. And I'm sorry that you've had that weight on your shoulders, and I just hope that you can find the strength and courage to do what's right for our future, for our children's future, and adopt Carl Weimer's proposed changes. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak during the open session?
Hello, I'm Ellen Howard, and I used to live on Ham Bay and Fern Bay Road, and so I got impacted by all the noise, all the trains, and them coupling all the trains. And what I have visions of because of the geography around here is that if we don't watch out, Bellingham's going to become like the Chicago train lines, that there's such a narrow space for all those trains to come through and them to put together. And then, and also, as soon as they could get through, BP started to build that train line that they put in. And they weren't announcing, they weren't covering their trucks, the newspapers weren't telling people in the county what was going on. And I just think there's, you just have to look at the geography and see the horrible impact of too many vessels coming through. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brian Carey. I spoke this morning, and I just thought it was funny, looking at this audience, who's still here today after the decision this morning? BP's not here, we are. We guys helped elect you, and I think that it's really a shame that once they got what they wanted, they left. We're here to stay, not them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hello, I'm Susan Hanson, and I just wanted to say that we have spent so much money already on salmon reparation of streams. And if we go through with what is being talked about, where does that leave us with our salmon? People say People say, what am I gonna feed my families? Well, it's not gonna be salmon. If we keep destroying the resource, they've already done the research, that we're warming the sound right now. We've lost so many fish, they closed the fishery for the first time. And I just wonder, again, we've already spent this money, so are we gonna get that money back? And how much more money are we going to have to spend to clean? Anything we do now, whatever it is, whatever your stand is, let's do it right the first time. Because what we spend now, if we don't do it right the first time, it's gonna cost us countless more money to fix anything we do now. So I don't care if you're on one side or the other, but if you look down the middle, what have we spent, what are we going to spend, and what are we gonna leave for the future? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will close the public session, and we will go into our consent agenda. Thank you all for your testimony, by the way. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
And thank you very much.
There are other people there besides them, even though they were sent an alert to be there.
Yeah.
Another kind of issue.
It's not normally responsible.
It's a subcommittee of that that recommends, kinda like, de facto.
Okay, we will resume, and we will go to Mr. Brown for the consent agenda from Finance.
Mr. Chair, the Watkins County Finance Administrative Services Committee met today. We considered items one through five of the consent agenda. These all received unanimous approval, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the five consent agenda items. Is there any discussion?
Who was the purchasing thing? That's not part of the agenda.
No.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item is listed on the agenda as an ordinance appealing or replacing Watkins County Code Chapter 1.12, council district boundaries, and it's listed as AB 2016-200, but I think it's actually supposed to be -220. So at least that's what the paperwork and the packet says. We are working on the amended version, which is the pink version, in which there were changes made to Section 2.21.020 to add the words, "As vacancies occur, provided that no two members shall reside in the same council district." So this was discussed by the council, subject to review of the final version and full vote of the full council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Mann.
So I am confused about the map that we were given today, because I just happen to be looking at it and see which of us lived in which districts going forward, and I noticed that three of us are in one district, and in another district, according to this map, there's three of us. And I was surprised by that. And I asked Councilmembers Sedu, looking at this map, you know, about where he lived and so on, and I'm not sure if the map that we got today is accurate.
Yeah, correct, yeah. Probably is.
I got a huge map from the auditor today. Why don't I just go in my office and grab it, and we'll look at it?
Do we know for sure that that's the accurate-
It's the final, final, final map. Let me go grab it.
Okay.
Actually, to Mr. Mann's point, the map I've seen, the shape file is different to this.
We're approving the words, though.
Yeah, no, I know that.
We are approving the words, but trying to compute in your brain the three-page description of, you know, points, I mean, pictures worth a thousand words, so let me see the pictures.
Well, can I-
Yeah, I can look at these words and know what that is.
Mr. Chair, since he's looking at some... I brought that up this morning with Dan Gibson. I don't know if you were there. It's so hard to tell where you are on those maps-
So, okay.
-and impossible to read the text.
So that map is different than this map.
Okay.
That map corroborates what I thought was the situation when I talked to Councilmember Sedu. So one district has three of us, one district has two of us, and then there's two districts with one each.
Or empty.
And then two that are empty. Yeah.
Other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Donovan. These words describe that map, the big map.
Not, I have not, I mean, it would-
I'm assuming-
-take Herculean effort on any, for a normal human being to translate the words into the map. I think we have to assume that's the official map, that it matches the words. I'll say for the record, I'm voting based on the map, because that's what I've been understanding all along as I followed the process.
Karen Fraes for the record. You've gotta understand that the words are what were adopted by-
I do.
...the districting committee, and you don't have any authority to change what the districting committee did. This just reflects the districting committee's work in your code. So it is what it is. It isn't either the map or the, I mean, it is what the committee adopted, whatever that is, and I believe the legal description is reflective of what the committee did.
That's correct. What I think the issue is, Ken was just wanting to clarify which map was the correct map.
Yeah, I wasn't proposing to change it one way or the other. I just wanted to be clear about, you know, with the materials that we have, they should be consistent and accurate, and I just wanna make sure that they are. So as I understand it now, that map reflects the language, and I'm, yeah, I'm gonna accept whatever the districting committee says, but I don't wanna authorize something that the words in the maps don't match up. That's all.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, Karen, I mean, Deputy Prosecutor Fraes. Sorry.
I don't have to be so official.
I mean, I'm having, even with the map, I'm having a hard time, and especially with the zigzags of all of them, and the irregular boundary look, to me, to me. It comes to us, we vote on it.
Well, you're not voting on the whether or not you want to see these boundaries. That's already been determined.
No, but what am I voting on?
You're just incorporating the work of the district, districting committee into the county code, because a part of the code has a legal description of the existing districts. You don't have any authority to change that. It's been done by the district committee.
I understand that, but I have the authority to vote no.
You can vote no, but it doesn't change that these are the districts.
Okay, and I'm not saying I will do that, but what if we all did that? What if we voted no? I mean, people are gonna have a hard time even knowing where they are.
We just would have inaccurate districts in our code. It wouldn't change that those are the districts that exist.
Okay, I thought this was supposed to be done for the public, not for the districting committee, and I'm just, I, we were talking about it yesterday, and I'm having such a hard time telling anybody what district they're in anymore, so.
Well, you know, I would imagine they can go to the auditor's office and get that information.
Yeah, I suppose if they have the time and take time off work or something, go to the auditor's office. I don't know. I just, I am really upset about this, the way it is, just because it's so difficult. Maybe it's that we were so used to the other districts, more or less, and they seemed more understandable, I don't know.
Mr. Sedu.
Oh, I was gonna say that when I was looking at it in the Foothills District, the wording mentions central line of Guide Meridian to central line of East Weiser Lake, but when we's looking at the map, it is showing south of the East Bartlett Road, and Bartlett doesn't even go through, so the coloring was wrong, the one we saw in the morning, the, whosoever did the colors on that. But the new one has the correct coloring as well as correct description, so.
You're not adopting a map.
No, we totally understand, yeah.
But we'd like to have the right map in the record and on the website, if that's possible.
I understand.
Okay.
Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, and in response to Councilmember Brenner, I think right now, the way we send ballots out and the way the auditors got stuff set up, you can check pretty quickly and figure out what district you're in, and it's, at some point, this map will be-
How can you do that like that?
They have to know where everybody is to be able to say what kind of ballot you're gonna get. So that information is in the database that the county auditor works with, so that, you know, we can maybe encourage Auditor Alvesteem to speed the process up so people can look up and figure out what district they're in, but we got the ability to do that.
Let's do that.
There used to be a feature that you could just type in your address, and it would tell you, it would tell you city ward, council district, legislative district.
Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry. I was afraid to open it, I was gonna check the auditor's-
Mr. Brown.
If you're gonna watch videos, can you use headphones? Just a commercial. I think this is a simple answer to someone who wishes to know what district they're in. I mean, worst case, just get a new voter registration card, it'll be on that.
Right, and I think you can access that information online.
Yeah, it'll take a little while to get updated.
Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending the Watkins County Code, Section 2.22.040, Watkins County Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials' Membership Turn of Office. And just for the benefit of the public, we are not changing our salaries. This is simply to change the way that the members are selected now that we are going to five districts. This received a recommendation of 3-0, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes. Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending Watkins County Code, Section 2.118.060, Wildlife Advisory Committee. Term of office and the purpose of this was to extend the program by one year to allow them to do their job. This received a recommendation of 3-0, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending the 2016 Budget 11 request. This received a recommendation of 3-0, and I so move.
Okay, we have a motion before us to amend the 2016 budget. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedu?
Yes.
Carl Weimer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance amending the Watkins County Code, 3.08, purchasing system. This was discussed in committee and held in committee, and the recommendation is that needs further work.
Okay.
I hope it stays there.
Held in committee.
Mr. Chair, the next item was to request approval for the county executive to award bid number 16-25 and enter into a contract with low bidder Bianchi Construction for the construction of the Birch Point Collaborative Drainage System Repair in the amount of $243,861.78. In this case, the council was acting as the Watkins County Flood Control Zone District Board of Supervisors. This received a recommendation of 3-0, and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item was a resolution authorizing an application to the Seven Recovery Funding Board for a lower mainstream habitat assessment grant. This received a recommendation of 3-0, and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the last item was request approval for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Watkins County and Watkins County Fire District Number Eight for Fire Protection Services for the Gooseberry Point Ferry Terminal in the amount of $1,537. This received a vote of 3-0, and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
That was all from finance.
Okay, we'll move on. We have a couple items on the jail stakeholder work group. The first one is the sheriff has nominated Deputy Mark Holst to serve as the Corrections Representative, and his nomination's before us for appointment, so I would entertain a motion to appoint.
I'll move. Approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes?
Just wanna say, these are the kind of people, rather than all the politicians, who I want on the task force.
Okay.
They actually live it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 7-0. Next item is a request by the small cities to increase their representation to, rather than one person, it's one, the proposal is one council member from the small cities and one small-city mayor. So I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
So, so looking at the changed language, it's clarifying that there'll be one mayor, and then you added this whole other line of council member representing the small cities. Is that right?
Yeah, the original was just one official from the small cities, and now we're designating it as a councilperson and a mayor.
They addressed it to Gary. They addressed the letter to Gary Buchanan.
Yeah, like, weeks ago.
Oh, yeah, I saw that, I saw that.
Weeks ago. Where are you going?
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, fair is fair. I'm gonna support it. It's more politicians, but there's two from Bellingham. It seems like it's only fair that there's two from the small cities altogether.
Okay, any other discussion?
I think I'm gonna not support it. I appreciated the effort to keep it small, and I agree that another politician isn't needed, and we appointed from our, the task force, very specifically, a non-elected official for that reason.
Ms. Brenner?
I thought there's two council members, and the executive.
No, no. The task force appointed one of our own members to this work group.
The other task force.
Oh, the other task force?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. This one I'm talking about, and-
That's what I'm talking about. We appointed Jack Ovenear, who's a citizen.
He's gonna be in this task force?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, good. Well, I still think-
Good work.
Oh, he's great.
I'm just trying to keep it small, and I-
Well, then we should just, let's change it and just do one county council member and, from the city and one from the county, and then, let's make it smaller. Take one off the city and one off the county.
That would be fine with me.
All right.
But-
I don't think they'd complain if we did that, the small city.
The city's already appointed there, too, but-
Well, then they can unappoint one. I mean, fair is fair, is all I'm saying.
I don't know why it's fair is fair. I mean, based on a percentage of population, I think it's probably fair the way it is.
I don't.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, seeing none, aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
So that passes, did you vote?
I did, I voted aye.
Okay, so that passes-
We're gonna have lots of politicians.
Five to two.
We might as well, the small cities are equal.
With Weimer and Mann opposed. Okay, we are on to introduction items. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I'll move so.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to introduce? Discussion?
Can we clarify that number- Can we clarify that number three is the substitute version?
Oh, yes. The substitute version of number three is in the pink, the pink packet. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. We must be on to committee reports. We had no committees today other than finance. Anything else? Other business items, starting down here? Mr. Mann?
I think this is other business. I'm not exactly clear on how all these things work. No, I'm not sure you do. Maybe you do, I don't know. I've received a number of comments from the public that the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force does not have any designees from the educational realm, and we, we talked about this at the task force, I brought it up, and there was, I think unanimous agreement, Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, you were. Oh, okay. Maybe there was one abstention, but, but of adding a member to the task force who is specifically from education, and I think, you know, teacher, principal, administration, but they do a ton with kids and various ways of discipline, obviously, and, of course, all those kids grow up and get older, and some may or may not have interactions with the criminal justice system. So, we were hoping to add a member to the, to the task force, and I'm just letting you know that I'll put that on agenda probably for, for our next meeting. Not going to ask you for any action right now, but just want to let you know.
How big is the task force now?
It's big.
I...
Any other business items? Nothing from me. Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, I thought Councilmember Mann was going to bring this up, but I think as soon as possible, we, I would like, and I, some of the others, would like a presentation on how our, our deputies and sheriff are handling situations that could become volatile, and I know that there's a lot of information they have about what they do. I saw the letter that we got from the sheriff, but he also said he'd be willing to make a presentation, too, and I think that would be really helpful. I mean, here we are, you talk about people going through checks and stuff like that, except those lowlifes like us, you know? We're on the first floor, so that we don't have much protection on the first floor. I just think it's, it's an interesting thing to, especially now, that it's time to look at what we've got. I don't know if we've ever really had a presentation on it before. So, should I make a motion?
If that's what you'd like to do, yes.
I move that we, as soon as possible, have the sheriff or his designate make a presentation to us on what the county, what Watkin County is doing, and what, you know, what kind of education and other kinds of training that the deputies go through, but also how they, how they're kept safe, and how they keep the courthouse and public buildings safe.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Discussion?
I'm not sure I really, I'm not sure I really understand what we're asking for. I think...
I'm asking for us to get some information, so we're more knowledgeable about what the heck is going on out there, and it's, this is the time. I don't, I don't feel sure about what's, what's being done locally or nationally, so...
Ms. Brenner, I'm not against what you're asking, I'm just not clear what you're asking.
I'm asking for a presentation.
Let me see if I can help. So, I think a few of us, in the aftermath of the Dallas shootings and some of the other, you know, tragedies we've seen related to law enforcement in both directions, a number of us, at least two or three maybe, just sent a message to the sheriff, say, hey, are we, are we doing everything we can to make sure our law enforcement officers are safe and are treating everyone properly and are prepared for the horrible possibilities of, you know, a situation going sideways, and even crowd control and things like that, and I think three of us independently sent those types of questions to the sheriff, and he responded with a very thorough letter saying, of course, they have lots of training like that, which we would expect, and of course, they do a lot in the way of making sure they treat every person they encounter with respect, and he then offered to put something together and give a presentation to us, and just let us know some of the processes and procedures and training that they do have, so. I, I just think, you know, when we, when we've seen what's going on around the country, it fits and starts, it, it would be, it's good for us to make sure...
It's the right time.
We're, we're okay with, you know, all the things we're doing, or if we want to do more, or whatever, so, and the sheriff seemed inclined to do that, for, he was more than inclined, he was happy to do it.
Are you...
Well, I think, first of all, I just want to say, I've lived here for 22 years, and I'm grateful for the fact that I cannot remember one situation where any law enforcement agency in Watkin County has, has ended up in a situation that's reached the level of media attention that we've seen elsewhere around the country, and I think that's largely due to the very high quality of training that the law enforcement here appears to receive, and if, Ms. Brenner, you're, you're asking for, for a presentation on that, I fully support that. I'd like to see that. I'd like to know what we're doing, because it seems to be working, and I'd like to know what we're doing to help, to do that, and frankly, what else we can do to improve that.
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I think so, too, but I, I also think, sorry about that, I also think times are changing, and, I mean, when that little county up in Michigan, smaller than we are, had, what was it, I think it was two deputies and someone else gets shot, and some of them died, that was like, what, yesterday? I mean, this is getting ridiculous, so, I'm just, at some point, I think people speaking their mind and doing all that is really important, but at some point, you, people say things, they get really angry and they say things, and other people take those comments and go with it and get violent, and it's, I mean, this whole thing, they're, I've seen stuff on TV with, with different groups saying stuff that I found shocking, and nobody said anything about them, and they kept putting it on TV on and on and on, and now, this is what, you know, I think that's partly what happens. You get people doing threatening things, and nobody, everybody's so scared to be, they want to be politically correct, that they do nothing, and bad things can happen, so it makes me, it makes me upset, makes me angry.
Mr. Donovan?
Up until that moment, I was really, I guess, very supportive of the idea, until the situation is linked to people speaking about issues.
I'm not saying speaking, I'm saying, and I don't want to get into what I've heard, but just some of the stuff is very, very violent, and it's on all kinds of sides of stuff, so...
Yeah, I just, I just want to speak, I mean, it's good we have a presentation on this, but, but there's this sort of linking it to people are saying things that are frightening.
Oh, that's not what I mean.
Okay, maybe, I probably misunderstood.
Frightening is one thing. I could frighten you right now, but I won't. But there's, you know, it's kind of like yelling fire in a, in a crowded movie theater.
I guess I just want to make sure we do this, you know, calmly, and...
I'll be calm.
And not in a, in reaction to a sense that people are saying things that are, that are causing, because I, I hear that language, and I, then I start worrying that, like, okay, well, it's, there's a national discussion about police violence, and that, that then is seen as a cause of these things that are going on.
I wasn't thinking of that at all.
Then, then I'm...
I will tell you after the, after the meeting, what, what really shocked me.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I hope we do, we do this in a, in a...
I promise I will behave.
Proactive.
Yeah.
I, I admit, I'm confused by a lot of what you just said, Ms. Brenner, but I'm pretty sure you weren't advocating for any kind of curtailment of our First Amendment rights or anything.
No.
I'm, I'm sure of that. So, to summarize it, if I can, we're interested in just understanding a little better what the sheriff is doing, and what their training consists of, that keeps our officers safe, keeps the public safe, how they behave in a, in a traffic stop or any kind of interaction with the public, maybe have some crowd control techniques and material that they have, just, so we have an idea what our preparedness level is for some of these tragic situations we've seen around the country. I mean, I...
That's exactly what I mean.
Okay, great.
Because I don't want to infringe on, on people's First Amendment rights, but I think if we're going to have that kind of rhetoric out there, that we better be prepared. That's all. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Any other, other business?
No.
What about council, business?
Yeah.
Okay.
We got a request from the planning unit, I don't know, a week or two ago now, that they wanted, they had a $40,000 budget, and we were waiting for them to come back and say how they wanted to spend it, and they gave us a proposal that they wanted to spend $30,000 of it, I think, updating a website or something. I don't know what's happening with that, so...
I don't either.
This is just an inquiry of how we're responding to that, and do we need to put it in either at our surface water work session next Tuesday or...
Or finance. Maybe finance.
Yeah, somewhere, just so we can do it.
So, Deputy Executive Tyler Schroeder, I don't know the status of that request, but surface water work session, and I believe we'd be able to give an update at that point, if appropriate.
Because if we wait too long, we'll be past the budget.
I'd rather take a look at it and get council direction and go from there.
Thanks.
Okay.